I'd like to call the May 8, 2014 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Pond.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bryan.
Here.
First order of business is council minutes from the meetings of April 7 and April 10, 2014. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve the minutes from the April 7 and April 10 meetings.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bryan.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
We have no matters of special privilege today. Next order of business is budget adoption. First is the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2014, proposed Resolution 14-13, and second is the proposed water rate of $4.95 per thousand gallons, proposed ordinance 14-10.
I really have nothing to add at this point. We're, from staff's standpoint, believe we're ready for you all to adopt next year's budget.
Any questions, comments?
I'd just like to say one more time, thanks to staff for putting together a really workable document and one that allows flexibility in both the areas of economic development and tourism promotion for council and the Economic Development Authority to respond to needs as they arise within the budget year. And I think that's going to be particularly helpful to us over the next 12 months.
Anybody else? I'll take a motion. We need to do this as two separate motions, Your Honor.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of Resolution 14-03, the budget adoption for fiscal year 2015.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Walton?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bryan.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Second is the proposed water rate.
Ms. Newsom's doing such a fine job.
No, we're not going to do it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of Proposed Ordinance 14-10.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Walton?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bryan.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next order of business are reports. The first, the monthly financial statements. Jack, anything in particular?
Something in particular. There might be some questions you have, and Phil and I'd be happy to answer them, but I have nothing particular to point out.
Any questions, comments?
It's all very obvious.
Yes, let's wait for the April and let's hope there's some, a big jump. Okay. Monthly Department operating reports. Anything in particular, Jack?
Yes, with the operating reports, I'd just like to highlight one thing, of course, every month, those hundreds and hundreds of metrics that you receive, but we're engaged, we being city staff, over the next couple of months, working with the International City County Management Association, who has just entered into a partnership with SAS, S.A.S., who's the leading world, a leading developer of performance analytics software worldwide. And so ICMA has contracted with them and is developing a new package to roll out July 1 to localities all across the country. And so Phil Sarah and Mark Barham are working week to week with the development group. There are 10 pilot cities around the country, and Williamsburg is one of them, developing this software. And I continue to serve on the advisory committee to ICMA for this. So we are, let's just say, one of the small communities in the group. Others involved include Austin and Tacoma and Scottsdale and a few other places, but we'll bring the small community perspective and make sure that they keep it real.
Well, that's a nice feather in your and Mark and Phil's caps. I know Phil and Mark, I'm not sure you need one more thing on top of everything you do, but thank you for being willing to do that. I think it's important for the city and ultimately for cities across the country.
That's all.
Any questions about operating reports? If not, next is the City Manager Report, and this is ARB 14-19, the location of a monument sign in the public right-of-way at 311 Second Street.
Yes, Ms. Murphy will give this report.
Carolyn, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Holman and members of council, as stated, this is a request for the shops at Second Street to construct this monument sign on the Second Street right-of-way. The Architectural Review Board approved the proposed design in April. As you can see, it has a dark background with white lettering on a brick base. Since this program was implemented in 2000, this is the ninth case requesting approval for signs to be located on the city's right-of-way. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Stack recommends approval with the five conditions as noted in my staff memo.
Anybody have any questions? You said, how many times have we done this on?
This is the ninth one. We've had eight previously, three on Second Street, three on Capitol Lane and Road, Parkway Apartments on Merrimack Trail, and Quality Suites on Richmond Road.
And have we had any problems with any of those?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
No.
If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve the location of the proposed sign on the city right-of-way, subject to the five conditions recommended by staff.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bryan.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next is the City Attorney Report, and this is creation of the position and appointment of a deputy clerk of council.
The Code of Virginia and the City Charter requires that a clerk of council be appointed by council and provides that the clerk has certain functions to fulfill. Some of those functions can be handled by staff taking minutes, for example, but there are certain duties that can only be done by clerk of council, for example, certifying records of the council, the clerk countersigns, for example, ordinances and resolutions adopted by council. And when the clerk is not available for some reason, there is no one currently to fill that position and sign those documents. The staff is recommending that council create the position of deputy clerk of council and appoint Ms. Walton to do that, so that when the clerk is absent, the functions of government can continue with the deputy clerk who's authorized to engage in those activities. And so council has before it Proposed Ordinance 1412 and Proposed Resolution 1404 to do that.
Okay. Any questions?
Just to be clear, we're not creating another paid position. This is?
This is simply to allow Ms. Walton to sign as the deputy clerk of council when our clerk is not available.
And we should do these as two separate, the ordinance and then the resolution. I'll take a motion for the proposed ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council adopt Proposed Ordinance 14-12, creating the position of deputy clerk of council.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll?
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bryan.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
And a motion for resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve Resolution 14-04, appointing Jerry S. Walton as deputy clerk of council for the city of Williamsburg.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bryan.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Our next order of business is Architectural Review Board appeal, and this is ARB 14-013, Appeal of Architectural Review Board Decision Regarding Replacement of Illegally Installed Replacement Windows at 1109 Lafayette Street. Carolyn?
Mayor Holman and members of council, Peter Cornwulf is appealing the decision of the Architectural Review Board to deny the replacement of illegally installed vinyl windows with vinyl clad wood windows at 1109 Lafayette Street. On November 4, 2013, the applicant filed an application to replace asbestos siding with vinyl siding to install aluminum gutters and to remove and replace existing wood windows with vinyl windows. The board approved the aluminum gutters, the installation of the vinyl siding, condition upon the wood siding under the asbestos siding being retained and denied replacing the original wood windows with vinyl windows. The denial was based on the Design Review Guidelines, which recommends retaining and repairing the original wood windows. On February 6, after receiving a complaint, an inspection revealed the original wood windows had been removed and vinyl windows had been installed, resulting in the violation of the zoning ordinance. On February 14, the applicant filed a request to replace the illegally installed vinyl windows with vinyl clad wood windows. The request was heard at the February 25 Architectural Review Board meeting. After a lengthy discussion, the board denied the request because it did not comply with the Design Review Guidelines, which requires repairing and retaining the original wood windows, or if restoration is not possible, then copies of the original wood window matching the earlier form and details are required. In your information packet, you were provided the applicant's appeal letters, the ARB's case information on the appeal, the zoning ordinance sections on the appeal process, and the standards for approval. This property is located in the Architecture Preservation District, AP 3, which states the following: Existing wood windows should be retained and repaired for windows for buildings located in the AP 3 district. If restoration is not possible, then copies of the original wood window matching the existing sash and frames with duplicates and would follow the earlier form and details are required. Therefore, City Council needs to decide whether to affirm, reverse, or modify and hold apart the decision of the Architectural Review Board to deny the request of Peter Cornwulf to replace the illegally installed vinyl windows at 1109 Lafayette Street with vinyl clad wood windows, which do not meet the Design Review Guidelines. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Your Mayor.
Thank you. Before I open the hearing, I'll come to council for any questions for Carolyn.
Can I ask a question of someone else? Michelle, could you help us with exactly what our purview here is in this situation? Are we evaluating the quality of the ARB's judgment, or are we looking at their application of rules to a particular situation? What's the extent to which we can interpret this?
It is essentially a review of the ARB's decision using the same guidelines that the ARB uses. So the ARB is looking at the Design Review Guidelines and making these determinations, and council then, after hearing the applicant, is required to use the exact same standards of guidelines in making those decisions.
So it's really question, if I'm interpreting you correctly, it's easier if I say it my own words sometimes. We are trying to make a determination as to whether the ARB has correctly applied the guidelines to the case. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you, Carolyn. I'll now open the public hearing, and if anyone wishes to speak to the issue, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Peter Cornwulf. I live at 1109 Lafayette Street, and I'm the one who finds myself embroiled in what I'm calling window gate. You know, my mom and I really had good intentions. All we wanted to do was fix up a pretty disgusting looking house. And I think it looks night and day better than what it was. I was unaware.
If you would quit speaking till you get back to the microphone.
I was going to show you what it looked like before.
No, this is being recorded and televised, so it's helpful if you speak into the microphone. No, that's fine, it's just.
I just want to let you see what it looks like now, what it looked like before. So I was faced with a house that was trashed by years of college students, asbestos siding, falling apart. Sadly, ironically, if anybody ever does want to restore the house, it does have wood siding underneath. You can see it poking out in the one photo. But I'm honestly very disappointed in my city, and over this whole matter, it's been very upsetting to me, because I feel the city's being hypocritical. I didn't realize until after the fact that I'd missed the window party, that the law, this whole rezoning into the arts district brings with it all the historical district codes, which I think is a mistake. I don't think what I should be, I've got to look at a neighborhood that has vinyl windows, you've got them in within the last year's timeframe before the law was changed. I also got to look at eyesore of the, but for whatever reason, the city thinks that these windows are an eyesore, when the windows that you're looking at on those photos are really what was the eyesore. So I charged the city, while it informed me of the zoning change, it never informed me of the specifics of the original materials clause in the code. So when the city finally did send an inspector, I feel like I was, the city sent this inspector, Bob Burns, over, but I'm charged he failed to do his job. Not only did he not introduce himself, he came to my house, he looked at one window, and he walked out, never said a word, never informed me of the law. And honestly, in hindsight, I realized that I was doomed from the get-go, that he had no intention of allowing my vinyl windows. So we, my mom and I had purchased these windows, not knowing of this law, of this original materials clause. You know, never mind the fact that all my windows were rotting out, and I had, I still have a hole in my ceiling in my living room from where the water's been pouring in. And I'm very disappointed in this city. I was doomed from the start because of the way they shiftily changed the laws. And I feel it's hypocritical that buildings all over my street have vinyl windows. And solid city buildings, too, how about Nahtie Whaley, for example, covered with vinyl windows? How can the city didn't restore those windows? Well, so I feel it's very hypocritical for them to try to make me rip out my windows. You're basically forcing me to restore my house, which, I could go off on a whole other tangent about how the constitutionality thereof of my property rights being invaded, but that's just for another argument. I did make this printout. You know, honestly, I'm just disappointed. I think the house looks great. I know it doesn't meet the original materials clause, but I think for the city to make me rip these windows out, replace them with wood windows, it's just basically unfair. It amounts to what I consider extortion, because your fines are absolutely ridiculous. I was hoping I would get like a one-time fine, maybe, and be done with it, but no, you want me to rip them all out, and I guess that's what I'm faced with now. And I'm actually asking the council to reverse the decision of the Architectural Review Board, which I think took it personally, like they thought I was angry at the city, when really all we were trying to do is just make an eyesore look nice. If I had known about the clause, and the windows were beyond restoration, you asked my builder, if you asked my mom, if you asked any of the people we tried to get to restore the windows, and I've tried to restore them myself, they were beyond repair. Though he, Bob Burns, looked at the one window and then made his judgment and walked out. He didn't go look at my ceiling. I can show you pictures, if you'd like to see them, of my ceiling and other damage from, literally like six or seven of the windows are all leaking and damaging my house. I was, the city basically had me, left me in limbo, because my old windows were leaking and wrecking my house, not to mention all the energy wasting and the noise. That's the other thing the city doesn't consider, is what it's like to live on Lafayette Street with the constant barrage of train, constant emergency vehicles, the pothole that makes every trailer rattle. It's a very noisy city, and I'm on my 70-year-old mother, living in a, and the maintenance requirement of a wood window is also, it causes endless maintenance, the paint, the windows rattle, the trains, so I mean, just number of reasons why I think the city's flawed here. I think the law's being misapplied, and I feel if you're going to go ahead and make me rip out the windows, it's not only, in my eyes, corrupt and unjust, but it's hypocritical to the city. Anybody else want to say something here? Jerry, Jerry not ready to leave the, one of your cards out of your district, because this is how you're going to treat your artists.
Thank you very much for your comments. Would anybody else wish to speak?
Can I ask Mr. Cornwulf a question?
Yes.
Mr. Cornwulf?
Mr. Cornwulf?
Mr. Cornwulf, would you mind if I asked you a question?
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
If you would come to the stand, so again, we could.
Appreciate all the points you've made. What would be helpful to know is, do you feel or how do you feel that ARB misapplied the guidelines to your particular case?
You know, honestly, the ARB is following their guideline, but the guideline is the problem. The law, you're trying to apply the same standard to me as you are to like the historic district proper. I mean, I look at on the Super 8 Motel, and I look at another neighbor's window, it's got vinyl windows ironically, and it just feels hypocritical to me that now I'm having to rip my windows out. I think, I think the ARB means, well, I'm not, and I know that we're not going to get rid of the store, but if anybody read the article, I passed out. It's just to try to open people's minds that sometimes bureaucracy gets out of control. In my case, it's a perfect example of bureaucracy run amok, of laws that I know are designed to, you know, protect the city and keep the city beautiful, but really, if you're trying to attract artists to this district, you're going about it exactly the wrong way. I'm an artist who can't wait to get out of the city and all its regulations, and it's disappointing, because I spent the best years of my life trying to beautify this town as an arborist, and I wish, I wish the city cared about their trees about one tenth as much as it cares about its windows, but that's another point. Anyway, well, sorry, did I ask your question?
Yes, thank you.
I apologize if I'm a little scattered, but I hope this is a great saving.
If anyone else wishes to speak, please come, state your name and address.
I'm Jared Petro, and I live at 1105 Lafayette Street and 1101 Lafayette Street, and I've lived there for 20, 25 years, probably. And I kind of feel responsible for this situation, because I knew of the policy, the window policy of the city, and when they were renovating, one of my neighbors was renovating 1005 Lafayette Street, I noticed that they were putting vinyl windows in 1005 Lafayette Street. And so I went down there and talked to the contractor who was putting them in, and, you know, he's saying, yeah, it took a while to get it through the ARB, but we got them approved. And so I asked him if I could have one of the labels from the windows. And so then, when Pete was wanting to put his windows in, he was talking about how they wouldn't approve his windows, I said, well, they just approved them three houses up. I mean, how could they not approve them? They've already been approved three houses up. So I gave him the label, and I guess he contacted whoever.
Love you.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know what happened from there, but not less than a year ago, you know, they approved the windows in that house. And I don't know if you remember, I imagine the mayor remembers, but the city built the house at, I believe it's 917 Lafayette Street, and that house has vinyl windows in it that don't even have the six pane windows in it.
I think that that house was moved, it's part of.
No, no, the city built that house from scratch.
Oh.
That wasn't the one that was moved, that was the one that the city built and then sold to the gentleman that lives there now, Mr. Scott, I believe is his name.
Oh, that's.
So, you know, that, I mean, if the requirements don't apply to the city, then why should they apply to the residents? I mean, so, and also, you know, I mean, I've lived in that neighborhood for 20, 25 years. You know, Pete is the first neighbor I've had that wants to move back into the neighborhood. I mean, it wasn't, I guess it was 10 years ago, you were trying to force a deed amendment on all the owners in that neighborhood, where if the house was ever sold, it would have to be owner occupied. And now you've got a guy who wants to come back and live in the neighborhood, and you're making him miserable.
You're an artist in that.
And I don't, I don't know that, you know, I don't know about your guys' wives, but that house was beat to crap from years of being a rental, and drafty, leaky, wet, cold. You know, my wife wouldn't live in that house, so he had to fix it up. He went in, he did the floors, he did the outside, put the windows in. You know, granted, you know, people, people want to get things done, right? And the problem with the city is, it's every three months before you have the Architectural Review Board. It takes forever to get anything done, and they always deny it. So what's the point of even trying to do something? So, you know, he's just, he's just trying to, the house looks twice as good. I mean, you've got the Ghetto 8 Motel right there on the corner, laundry hanging out the windows. I mean, the whole area of West Williamsburg there is going to pop. You know, in the area, you've got a guy wanting to fix the place up. That house right next door there, the slumlord doesn't take care of that place.
They got vinyl windows.
And they got vinyl windows. So I just walked Lafayette Street on that side, next to the railroad tracks, and at least five of the houses already have vinyl or aluminum clad windows installed. So, you know, I, so I apologize to Pete if I led him down the wrong path, but I saw where they had already approved windows, and I just don't get the whole window thing. I mean, when you're 70 years old, do you want to be climbing up there and shipping paint and caulk out of that, out of that second-story window?
I've mentioned.
That's the only way you can do it on a wood window. You can't, you know, these nice vinyl windows you can flip in and clean and take care of. This is ridiculous. I mean, it's like you said, it's window gate. I don't understand the whole window thing. This is juvenile, Your Honor, it's juvenile. It's an ego thing down at the Architectural Review Board.
Well, thank you very much for your comment. Anybody else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Patricia Cornwulf. I live at 1109 Lafayette, I'm the wife of Peter, and I am the wife that did not want to live in the house the way it was, because it was gross, and we have worked very hard at restoring it and making it beautiful again. What, what really perplexes me is you want us to take these windows out to put vinyl clad windows in, which are going to look exactly the same as these windows do, and it seems like a colossal waste of resources, when we could take this money that we would spend putting windows in that look exactly like these do, and we could plant trees, and we could buy a new shed, and we could do more for the house to make it even more beautiful. What we're trying to do is make the city look beautiful again. We could, we could much better use those resources in other ways than replacing windows that are going to look exactly the same as the ones that are there currently.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
How you doing? Bob Lane, 248 Yorkshire Drive. On my role as a member of the ARB, back in November, when we received this application, I visited the house prior to the meeting to look at the request for the changes, which included the windows. My, my review that day was certainly not a detailed window-by-window review. It was just a general review, and in my opinion, the windows were basically structurally sound. There were some repairs necessary, but the majority of the work was more of a maintenance-type nature, or lack of maintenance issue more than a structural issue.
How many windows did you close all the windows?
So that it was not a situation where, as the guideline suggests, if it's impossible to restore the existing windows, the next option is to replace them with wooden windows. So we didn't, and we were not requested at that time to replace them with, you know, another wooden window. There's another aspect to this that is often an issue. If you go to the Comprehensive Plan or the Secretary of the Interior's Guidelines, we're charged, or if you will, our objectives are to preserve character in the town of Williamsburg and maintain desirable aesthetic features. Many people interpret that to mean how things look, but appearance is really only very one, one aspect of that whole preserving the character of what we have here. So the buildings in the, in the districts, the various districts we have identified, well, let me, let me just say, Colonial Williamsburg, I mean, people think of that, and Colonial Williamsburg has a lot of resources to develop, and what they have developed, and even they are limited in resources, but they, and for that reason, they focus on a very small section of time in the 17th Center, in the 1700s, I should say. But we have 200 years after that, or more now, of history in the town that the Architectural Review Board is dealing with. So when you look at what is a relatively modest bungalow here, most people would look at that and say, that's not really part of the fabric of Williamsburg, not part of the character of Williamsburg. But in fact, it is. It's a very precious part of the character of Williamsburg. And there are very few of these structures left, because typically, people don't value them. And, you know, individual owners like myself or Mr. Cornwulf don't have the resources necessarily, certainly not to restore as Colonial Williamsburg does. But in any case, that's a very, as modest as it looks, a very significant part of the fabric and character of Williamsburg. And that often, as I said, gets lost in the idea that Colonial Williamsburg is doing the reservation and so, but again, it's a very small window in the history that they deal with, so I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
I appreciate Mr. Lane. I, as the mother, this has been very traumatic, very costly, very time-consuming, and I only wanted to do the best, and no good deed goes unpunished. I tried for two full months to find somebody who would work with these windows. They laughed at me. I even called Mr. Lane twice on the weekend to spend a lot of time, and he said, if you come up with names of people who will restore the wood windows, by all means tell me, we will make a list. So I had no disrespect in mind. I wound up paying the money. I would have done anything I could to restore the old windows, it just wasn't meant to be, because no one is there to do it. So how can the city pass an audience when you can't get the work done? Henry, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? If not, I'll come back to council for discussion and action.
May I ask Ms. Murphy a question?
I think all of us have several questions. Carolyn?
What's the connection between the AP 3 designation? What's the connection between the AP3 designation and the arts district overlay?
This area in town has been in the preservation district since 1991, when we really changed the architectural review guidelines and did the whole district. So the arts district connection really has nothing to do with what the AP3 is. It used to be an AP2, and several years ago, we went through town and looked at some of the older neighborhoods where, like this neighborhood, some of the fabric had been taken away from windows and siding and so forth. So we created the AP3 district, which was a lesser category, to help with these types of neighborhoods. So this neighborhood's been in the preservation district since 1991.
And then approximately how many years ago? Six, five?
That we changed it to AP3?
Yes.
Or probably about 2005, maybe? Almost 10 years.
The, the review before this, yeah. It was either 2003.
Two, five or six, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Somewhere.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that, that there are a number of issues at play here, but really none of them have anything to do with the arts district overlay. It's really the architectural preservation III designation. Okay, thank you.
Well, I think that's important because there seems to be some confusion as to when this happened. I think there's, the accusation is that we kind of slid this in without people knowing it, but I think in fact, the architectural district has been in place since 1991. At any point did, just help me understand the timing of this. The applicant came to ARB with the request to do the siding, the gutters and the windows?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So they knew at that point when ARB denied the windows that they couldn't replace those windows?
That's correct.
Okay. But they're, and subsequently then the windows are replaced.
And they did not appeal that decision.
Okay.
They could replace them, but they'd have to be replaced with wood windows?
That's correct.
But, so they either have to be repaired or replaced with wood windows under the guidelines, right?
Just for context, said that there are five houses on the section of Lafayette that have vinyl clad, vinyl or aluminum windows. How would those have gotten there?
They could have been done before the guidelines were changed because there have been different changes to the guidelines since 1991. They could have come to the board and got approval to re, take windows out and prove beyond a doubt to the board that the windows they had were not repairable and that the one that was going in there was acceptable. So I mean, that's, that's different. You're talking from 1991 to 2014, that's a long period. And even before that, they could have changed because usually in the 70s, if I remember correctly, that's when the big push for aluminum siding and those types of materials came through. So it could have been, aluminum siding and those things could have been put on back in that timeframe too. And we've changed those guidelines over time by allowing now vinyl siding to be, to be added over top of the existing wood siding for replacement for asbestos siding or aluminum siding or vinyl siding. So we've changed the guidelines over the course of time to sort of update the materials.
Do you have a follow-up?
Sure.
The AP stands for architectural preservation.
That's correct.
So the intent of this designation is to preserve architectural material that dates to a, to or prior to a certain period of time in homes or styles that are deemed to be worthy of preserving. What's the AP3 rule on new construction?
New construction, we allow a variety of materials. We allow the aluminum clad wood windows, we allow vinyl clad wood windows, we of course allow wood windows. There's different guidelines as to what the, the muttons can be, you know, between the panes of glass. The materials are your typical materials, hardy plank, brick, wood. Those types of materials are allowed by right with a new building or an addition to a new building. So it's...
So there's much more latitude in new construction?
Much more latitude in AP3 than in AP1 or II.
So explain to me why that difference in, you know, the latitude of flexibility with new construction versus original buildings?
The original building, as Mr. Lane was, was pointing out, is that when you're looking at preservation, you're not trying to preserve just the best of all that's around the city. You're trying to preserve the different dates and times and the different types of neighborhoods and those kinds of things. For this neighborhood, a lot of it has been gone. So that's what makes the existing homes that haven't had the materials replaced more important because that's talking about that period of time. So that's sort of the reason behind preservation is you're trying to preserve the original fabric of the, of the dwelling. And for additions, addition is a today time. So it would allow on an addition different materials than what it would allow on the original material building.
One other, several other questions. 1105 was mentioned as a, as a building that has vinyl windows.
1005.
1005.
1005, sorry. If that's the case, what, what would that owner have had to do to, to have those be approved for installation?
It would depend on what type of window was in it, and if that, go and pull in the case. I don't know the background of the case. It would depend on the condition of the windows, it would depend on the quality of the, the window and other things, meaning the design review guidelines. So it may take several meetings sometimes to get a window approved because sometimes you come in with the wrong type of window. We don't allow just a plain vinyl window. Usually, we usually require vinyl clad wood or aluminum clad wood because they are more sturdy and more, more reliable.
Judy, you may provide some context to this, but I'm pretty sure 1005, 1005 was built by the housing authority.
Right.
And then sold as, as this like a spray house.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, new construction.
That was new construction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there other properties in this area, in this district that have sort of gone through the process, you know, essentially replaced windows with wood windows or repaired the existing wood windows?
In most instances, once they are told that, they end up repairing their existing wood windows. And we have a list of people that we give out now to individuals on who can repair windows. If they can't, then they go and sometimes go to a place like Caravati's in Richmond and buy a old, used wood window and install it. Or they have someone make a new win, new wood windows, true divided like windows, like a couple of houses on Capitoline Road that were moved in Capitoline Green. One of those houses had to actually have created a couple of new windows to go in there because they couldn't be repaired.
And the, the question of vinyl versus vinyl clad wood was mentioned, but that's really not part of what's before us, is that correct?
What's before you today is you have in vinyl windows which were installed illegally, the board is basically saying that the design review guidelines say that you should first repair the existing wood windows. And if you can't repair the existing wood windows, then a replacement wood window matching the sashes and frames and all the other dimensions of the wood is the second alternative. And what the applicant, the application here is to allow the vinyl, the application before you was to install vinyl clad wood windows to replace the illegally installed vinyl windows, which goes back to the wood windows. So basically, they're saying instead of installing a, putting in a new wood window to allow them to keep the vinyl clad, the vinyl window that they've installed, but that, which is not allowed by the ordinance, so it's, it gets pretty complicated.
Any other questions? Yeah, Judy.
Carolyn, would the owner be allowed to demolish this house?
You could not demolish the house if they go into the architectural review board and meet in the criteria for demolition. And if the architectural review board denied the request, then they could appeal to council. And of course, then if council upheld the decision of the architectural review board, then they have a year to put their home on the market at fair market value. And then if it's not bought in that year, then they have the right to demolish it. That's what the, the code requires.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question from Sheldon.
Yep.
If I may, not to switch gears. If the applicant wants to appeal whatever decision the council makes today, they have another level that they can go to?
And appeal to the circuit court.
Okay. And the circuit court would be using the same criteria that council would use as to whether or not the ARB has accurately interpreted and applied the guidelines to the circumstances of the case?
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Cornwulf.
I'm going to read a little bit off of this because it really resonated when I talked to the fellow who actually wrote this article, and he told me I was basically screwed. "The little man is squeezed out. Like a cancer, historic districts tend to grow, infecting surrounding areas. The voluntary guidelines aren't voluntary. They turn into costly regulations, which when combined with higher taxes, stupidity, arbitrary regulation edicts racial discrimination, corruption, political favoritism, for those who are in the local establishment clique, ends up driving the average property into that, which is basically what's happening to me. I'm being driven out of my town because I feel outraged that when all I try to do is fix my house, it's always blown up in my face because some obscure original materials clause, draconian law, buried in the historic..." And I should also let the city know that if, if you do make me rip my windows out and put in wood ones, I'm going to protest it to the cows come home because I feel it's unjust. I feel, I can go on and on from this article about how it trounces all over my property rights. In fact, let me read that line. "Historical districts are legal," right? She loves to throw around the word lawful. But actually, legal, yes, but are they lawful? There's a difference. Americans who truly want to preserve freedoms, culture, heritage and history, need to learn the difference between legal and lawful. Private property rights, the right of due process and the protection against involuntary servitude, which are all violated by historic district ordinances, are examples of lawful rights protected by our constitution." So you're basically trouncing all over my constitutional rights by, oh, and I didn't mention the fine too. You want to know what the city's trying to fine me for every day I leave these windows in and say no to their hypocritical law? It's like $300 a day per window. That's extortion in my book. So I strongly urge the, the city council to consider this because I've prepared to protest it to the fullest extent of my Fifth Amendment rights.
Thank you, Mr. Cornwulf. Some questions?
Oh, and ironically, one more thing. The one who's ended up paying the bill is the one who wrote the book on architectural planning, Architecture in Town Planning: Colonial North America. It's actually a textbook in college, there's actually three of them. So that's the one who's going to get screwed by you guys if you make us rip these windows out.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cornwulf. Carolyn, could you tell us, the, give us some history of how long the city has had an architectural review board and architectural review guideline?
Well, that's a tough one.
Mr. Nestor may know.
It was the Board of Architectural Consultants before 1991, and then it became Architectural Review and the Board of Architectural Consultants.
That, that was first established, what, in the 1950s?
Fifty.
1958. So the city's had architectural review essentially since 1958. Ms. Shelton, thank, thank you. There's some questions of constitutionality have been raised. What, what can you tell us about the legality of these types of regulations?
The Supreme Court has upheld zoning regulations in the city, in cities, in towns. This is part of zoning ordinance. Those have generally been upheld, architectural regulations have been upheld. The city, in this case, went through the entire process of changing the zoning ordinance with the appropriate notice to the property owners. And so while there is a difference of opinion about whether or not they should be imposed, they are in fact legal.
Thank you.
Legal and not lawful.
Any, any other questions at this point? Okay.
I don't have a question, but I'd, I'd just like to say that the decision we're about to make is not about windows. It's about whether or not the architectural review board did the right thing.
Whether they followed the guidelines.
Whether they followed the guidelines.
And applied them fairly and, and consistently across properties. I think that's the real question.
Yeah.
So I guess just a comment, you know, I think we're all very sympathetic, you know, to the expense and your desire. I mean, it makes perfect sense. But if we, if we make a decision to, to allow windows to stay, we're essentially sending the message to the community, "You can do what you want. There's, you know, all you got to do is, is come to council and protest." And I don't know that that's the right message. And, you know, so that's one side of it. For me, in defense of the, the ARB and what it is that they do, as, as Mr. Lane and others have said, these, these guidelines are in place so that we can preserve aspects of Williamsburg into the future. You know, if we don't have these guidelines, we'll essentially tear away even more of what Williamsburg once was, once was, you know? We all know Colonial Williamsburg is, is, you know, fairly modern, it's just built to look old. Very few original structures remain here. And I think if, if we allow these, what our current structures to be changed or demolished, then in a hundred years, we won't have any of those structures either. And so we'll just kind of be this faux historic Williamsburg. And so I think that, and I live in, in the AP district and, and, you know, I've got, you know, wood windows, you know, the ropes in the, in the sash, and, you know, it's, it's a challenge. It's work, it's maintenance, there's no question about it. But I, I honestly believe that's a part of the fabric of Williamsburg, and we need to protect that.
Yeah, thanks. I think, I think we can all agree with that. Anything else?
I think that, you know, the core of the question comes back to, did the ARB correctly apply the guidelines to this circumstance? I can't find any reason to suspect that they did anything but interpret the guidelines correctly. And I'm not trying to catch anybody with semantics, but even the applicant agrees that the ARB applied the guidelines correctly. The dispute seems to be more with the guidelines themselves than with whether or not they were interpreted and applied correctly. So if, and we just reviewed these guidelines two years ago and had a long conversation about what is the right balance in this community? Because I think we all struggle to some degree with the question of, do some guidelines impose restrictions that can become hardships and then in some ways deter people from wanting to invest further in their properties because in order to do it, the expense becomes greater? And it was looked at very closely and extensively, and there were a lot of conversations back and forth between the architectural review board and planning commission and city council and some adjustments.
With public hearings.
With public hearings, absolutely. And, and some modifications were made, and in the end, the decision, or not, it wasn't really a decision, it was a consensus or agreement that the guidelines that we then adopted were in the best long-term interest of the overall community. It, it may be difficult in certain circumstances, but the question really here is, those guidelines are in place. Did the ARB interpret and apply them correctly? And that's really the only thing we can consider related to this request.
Yeah. And there is a fairness issue here, both fairness to Mr. Cornwulf, but also fairness to those individuals who have followed the guidelines, both in this district and other districts as well. So I think, and Paul's exactly right, we, we, our decision here is a very prescribed decision.
Paul made the point well, how narrow our purview, to review here is. I can't say enough how much I appreciate the amount of work that goes into keeping up an old house, having done some of that work as, as when I was in college. So also, I completely understand as some, you know, as a young person who may be interested in purchasing a property like this, the headaches that come along with that. But this is, this is a decision and a, really a aesthetic ethic that this community has embraced and has for some time. So looking at our purview, with which to look at the ARB decision, I think it's pretty clear what we have to do.
Do you like to make a motion?
Yeah. My tablet's asleep here, hold on.
I, I'm...
Thanks, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council affirm the decision of the architectural review board to deny ARB 14-013, the request of Peter C. Cornwulf to replace the illegally installed vinyl windows at 1109 Lafayette Street with vinyl clad wood windows, which does not meet the design review guidelines.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mr. Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Prellin.
Aye.
Thank you all very much for your participation today. I know this was a difficult decision for, for us and for you.
Oh, it's nice. She's acting a fan.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next order of business is unfinished business. Do we have any, Jen?
Yes, sir.
Any new business?
If I could, I don't know that we need to take any action, but I just wanted to talk about, and it may be true for all of the different committees that we have, but one in particular is the Regional Issues Committee. And I had read at the minutes of the Historic Triangle Collaborative that there was a recommendation to limit or to recommendation there to have the discussion come back to the bodies to determine whether or not the Regional Issues Committee needs to meet as frequently as it currently does. And I don't know the answer to that. It would seem to me that that body could serve a significant purpose of talking about regional issues and do it in a public manner. And so to whatever extent we can, I think what it said in the minutes of the HDC was they struggled to have an agenda. I think we ought to try to use that committee a little bit more than we do. And so I just, we had a similar discussion about another committee, and so-
Yeah, and in fact, I think one of the items for our upcoming fall retreat was thinking about sort of the whole committee's structure and boards and commissions, but certainly the Regional Issues Committee, and I've served on it in the past, Paul has served on it for a number of years, you're serving on it now.
No, I have in the past.
So I think it's a discussion worth having and worth having along with the boards of supervisors in James City County and York County as well. So that's on the horizon.
One other item, as we just wrapped up the budget process, I spent some time talking to various different people about that process and how it can be handled, and it's not a new suggestion, but one that I think we as a body ought to have and maybe have some further discussions leading into the January retreat about a zero-based budget or aspects of a zero-based budget and the opportunities that that approach may afford us. You know, I know it's a little bit more work, but there may be significant rewards to be gained from a new approach. So, Jen?
I'm not a financial guy at all, but I was under the impression that we did, we operated on a zero-based budget, but perhaps we don't?
Modified.
Yeah, I would say modified. We still, we had a, at its core, a line item budget that then is expanded to 400 pages with program budget aspects, performance budgeting aspects, and zero-based in the sense that it's just not assumed that whatever you appropriated last year was going to be there again. It's so, but it is, it is not a methodology that came up initially in the 1970s in budgeting that said, you arrange your entire budget in a series of decision packages and rebuild all your programs from scratch at the beginning. So it doesn't take that approach. The newest thing now is now PBB, Priority-Based Budgeting or Budgeting for Outcomes, which is a whole nother kind of system. So there are, there's tons of literature out there on this.
And I think if we want to have this discussion, I think the priority approach probably offers a lot more for us than a zero-based budget. I mean, zero-based would say you take the police department back to zero and then justify every position and what have you and every expenditure and what have you. I'm not sure that the time spent doing that is very productive, whereas the priority-based budgeting, which I think really gives us many more options. And my sense is that what you and Phil do really takes that methodology for all practical purposes.
Well, it does, and it ties into with the goal-setting process of the city council. So that that's at the front end of our budgeting. It that adds that where are we going anyway with this?
And I'm sorry to say this originally, I do think with the dashboard and the way that the methodology that we have established in terms of accountability of just about everything is pretty efficient, and I think we've done a good job. I just, I guess in some of the discussions and in even my own mind, I wonder, you know, if there isn't some ability by maybe we go through it a little bit plainer or a little bit more line by line, getting an understanding of what's going on, where the money's going, and there may be an opportunity to streamline it a little bit more through a little bit finer comb.
Yeah, I think there's always, there's always value in rethinking and taking a look at sort of the processes you're using and can they be more efficient and use public dollars as efficiently and effectively as possible. So I don't doubt that's no question.
By no means is that my statement a criticism of what has been going on.
Understood. Anything else? If not, that brings us to open forum. I have one speaker's card, Jay Everson. Will you come forward, please?
Hi. I didn't realize you couldn't use the-
Yeah, sorry. That was a misunderstanding. We don't do that during open forum, but if you-
And I will say, I'm sorry with your name, but he made copies, but I need one copy so that I can follow my-
Okay.
I'm pretty good clerk.
If you can just give them to Ms. Walton, she can pass them around to us, and if you can share. But thank you for being here.
I appreciate it. I'll get the last one, the fifth one, and I appreciate it. I'd be delighted to pay for these because if I had known, I would have brought them myself. Well, thank you. I'm Jay Everson, 103 Branston Boulevard. I'm in the county. Let's say you're meeting from a very much, very differently than they do in James City County. It's kind of refreshing. I'm here today to talk about a budget item. I don't know if it's zero-based budgeting. I hope you do zero it out, but, or the performance-based budget or whatever, but it's about the fifth middle school. As you know, most, we have three operational middle schools right now. We have Norwich, Tuano, and, not Norwich, Tuano, Hornsby, and Berkeley. Those are operational. We have a fourth middle school at the annex at James Blair, which is currently mothballed. Back in '09, when that decision was made to put the central office over there, there was at that time thinking about remaining some type of enacted school of some sort in the annex. And as you know, we used to have the ALL program there. It didn't work out well, and it's been vacated. Now, I also have here, and I emailed to you, the middle school capacities and enrollments going forward to decade up to 2024. Put that in perspective, babies born last year will be entering the middle schools in 2024. So there, all the kids we're talking about of 10 years are still in diapers. And if you look at the current enrollment figures, you will see that we're actually in the middle schools under, currently under enrolled. The problem is Berkeley, Berkeley's being overrun, which is what's driving this concept of a fifth middle school somewhere. I assume the county thinks it's going to be the county. I don't know what they're planning to do, but I know they are looking for sites. Now, it seems to me, if you look at the projections going forward to 20, to about 2019, 2018, if you were to reopen the James Blair Annex, and I have proposed the IB program to go there. Now, I'll be honest with you, it hadn't occurred to me that that's a program issue, which is the purview of the school board, okay? I get it now, and I must admit, I hadn't thought of it originally. And you're more concerned about the resource, the building, because you're going to have to pay for it. And the reason I picked the IB program, I'm quite honest with you, because I knew that James River flowed into that, into Berkeley. And I figured, well, you could go around the corner to James Blair, and those IB students could continue on in the IB program in the middle school situation. Because in all of the United States, in higher countries, this is the only school division that has IB only at the elementary school level. This is a program that is typically is put in place at the high school level as opposed to AP. It's an AP program, so instead of having advanced placement, they would have the IB. And then it kind of over time filters down. And what I'm talking about here is we can filter it up, and we have a facility tailor-made for it. Because the James Blair Annex currently has a capacity of 230. Now, that's a 23 kids per class. Currently, the middle schools are looking at 25 to one, not 23 to one. And it's easily expandable. I didn't understand, but I could footnote it. So I understand it can be expanded without too much difficulty to 400, and the school board may in fact have looked at this in the past. The James Blair Annex has 10 classrooms, one administrative office, one guidance office, and complete restrooms. And I've got a diagram there of the actual annex. The James Blair, the big James Blair, and I made a mistake here, I should say big James Blair, has a cafeteria, which believe it or not, it's actually in use right now, serving meals, has a gymnasium, so you need some balls, library, would need some books, has an auditorium. Now, I know there's been an awful lot of controversy about the fact that the HVAC system is on the stage. Interestingly enough, I have found out that the middle school level, it really doesn't matter, because they really don't use stages like they do in high schools. So that that isn't the issue that I guess a lot of us, you know, filter it up to date. I've got the next one is the breakout of the whole James Blair. Now, currently, the annex has got some administrative personnel in it. But I remember when my kids, all three of my kids went to James Blair. In fact, my middle son first went, I think it was the eighth grade then, maybe it was the seventh grade, for the annex. And, and I've all got kids and are teenagers now, so it's been a long time, but this is a pretty big facility, so I don't think there'd be any problem taking these administrators that are currently in the annex and moving them back into the big James Blair. The James Blair Annex would solve the middle school capacity problems through 2019. That's five years without any capital cost. And I've given to understand, I wondered this today, that the school board may have a placeholder of some money in the budget currently for the IB program. So that maybe they're thinking about expanding it. Of course, I know that you don't want to get on, like step on their toes on that issue, but it just, what do you call it? A little tidbit of fact, if you will. And the James Blair Annex could be expanded to 400, I'm told, for under a million dollars. I put down 1/20 of the cost, so no one accuses me of lowballing this, if it ever could be expanded. If you were to expand it to 400, that solves your capacity problem to 2022. It's a long time from now. And the IB program, you know, it seems like a pretty good idea, but I think as far as you guys are concerned and for the county, it saves you what, 30 to 50 million dollars in capital cost, 3-plus million dollars a year in operational cost, not counting, I'm not sure how the fixtures, like the books and stuff like that, fit into all this money here, but it saves you all that. And I do, I'm asking, I've asked the board supervisors, and I'm here today to ask the city, you know, could you keep it off the CIP so that we could, you know, get them to fully utilize all the school facilities that we currently have? Thank you. Most kind for letting me go over my treatment. Just really appreciate it.
Jay, thank you for innovative thinking here, and I hope you'll put this before the school board, because this really is their decision, although we ultimately fund their decisions. Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to address city council in any matter?
I missed my speaker.
Carrie Flanagan of 306 Boundary Street.
Yes, sir. Hello, my name is Carrie Flanagan. I live at 306 South Boundary Street, apartment three. You may not recognize the address, but it's just on the street. I've come to speak to you today because I'm moving in June, and there's several things I felt needed to be said before I do. And while I doubt there's anything you guys can do in the immediate future, I hope you'll think about them and take into consideration should issues arise in the future. Williamsburg is the first place I ever had my own apartment. The best part was my landlord, quick as a flash to respond to any problems, when the dishwasher flooded, he was over in five minutes. If the big storm hit, he'd be over to check, day or night. Like every experience, however, there are downsides. For me, the worst part was actually dealing with the city's regulations and its inspectors. While I was happy with my landlord and the quality of my living situation, it felt like the inspectors were constantly harassing my landlord and us. In eight years, I had at least half a dozen run-ins, but four in particular stand out. The first time the inspectors came, I just moved in. I remember my landlord coming with a paintbrush, and we made these ridiculous rounds of the floorboards looking for scuffs because they wanted to find him $75 for paint chips on baseboards, none of which we could even find. The second time, I was woken up from a nap when an inspector was taking pictures into my bedroom window, pictures from a fenced-in backyard that they didn't have permission to be in. The third time, inspectors came and they essentially tried to steal from us. They were loading our backyard furniture and garden implements into a truck, citing them as debris, and all of which were very functional, safe, and neatly stored. When we threatened to call the police, they returned everything, left, and didn't come back. There were several other nondescript run-ins until my final time about a year ago. Yet again, another person was in the backyard taking pictures several feet from my bedroom window. This time, I actually called the police. The police were very polite and thorough, and I thanked them for that. The gentleman, who I later confirmed was indeed an inspector, never knocked, although he said he did. He never gave his name, and when I went out to confront him, he flashed something at me that was probably a badge before promptly scuttling away. He didn't give me time to check. Where I left confident in my ability to defend myself as a single female living alone in the repeated, living alone, the repeated trespasses would be extremely unsettling. Also, as far as I'm aware, none of these incidents resulted in any functional changes to more beautify the house, make it more safe, or any more compliant. The moment we complained, the issue went away. My understanding is that the city's job is to make each house safe for people to live in and others around it, not harass its inhabitants and possibly break their own laws because things aren't quite as shiny or new as they would like. When it came time for me to decide how I wanted to handle the next stage of my life, I, my first thought was I want to leave Williamsburg. And that, there are many factors to this, but key one was that while I found many good friends, organizations, and establishments here, there's significant downsides to the community, too. I didn't want to deal with the high-handed condescension and discrimination I felt I'd experienced from select officials and factions because I was a student or later near to a student's age. Students under 30 and under 30 are not second-class citizens. We provide a critical contribution to the town's economy and atmosphere, and so do those people who support us. I was once told that students couldn't register in Williamsburg to vote because they were qualified as transient. And yet, they stay in one town for their education a year longer than the average US family stays in one place. While the voting issue's been resolved and relations have greatly improved in the last few years, many others haven't, and the same attitude's abound, and I can't help but feel that a lot of these issues arose because we were students living in a college, in an apartment off campus. The next person that's going to live at my current residence is a student, and for his sake, I hope these issues don't persist. But I would also hope that everyone can learn at least three things, common, basic rules. Don't trespass, don't lie, and at least treat the people you're dealing with with a modicum of respect. We all seem to feel entitled to, regardless of age, status, or political agendas. I'm sure most of you adhere to that as a default, without even thinking about it. But it's necessary to make sure your representatives do, too. Every other type of public official I've dealt with in this town has been helpful, courteous, and very efficient, except those inspectors working for the city in regards to its housing regulations. Might be something you should look into. Thank you for your time. We love your speech.
Great, thank you very much. I regret your unfortunate experiences, and it's something that we worked very hard to and have worked very hard for a long time to make sure that every citizen of the city feels like they are a full citizen of the city and fully respected by the community and the city. So thank you for your comments. I have another speaker's card from Gary Shelley.
Good afternoon. I'm Gary Shelley. I'm in the 205 Indian Springs Road. I would like to welcome Mr. Pons and Mr. Foster back to council for another four-year term. I appreciate their time and their effort, dedication, regardless of whether or not I agree with their positions. My appreciation is not limited to Mr. Pons and Mr. Foster, but to all of you who serve, assuming, of course, that you're performing your duties honestly and openly. Mayor, this would exclude you. Your record speaks for itself. Your role in the 110 Harrison Avenue scandal defines you. You willfully and knowingly deceived the public to the benefit of your crony. Your actions were neither open nor transparent. You have not taken responsibility nor offered an explanation, in spite of the fact there was unprecedented protests from college students and others in the community. You have not held yourself accountable for the disastrous consequences of your deceit. of your deceit. You have been totally unresponsive to citizen concerns. The record speaks for itself. These facts are incontrovertible, and neither you nor anyone else has tried to refute them. Corruption by an elected official in American politics is not limited to the city of Williamsburg. Unfortunately for those elected officials who conduct themselves with integrity and high ethical standards, the actions of one dishonest official stains the reputation of all who serve. No good can come of this, as it leads to public distrust and disgust with those in whom the public should have the most respect and confidence. It is sometimes difficult for honest officials harmed by an unethical colleague to prove their integrity. Fortunately for the other four members of this council, they have that opportunity to prove to their constituents that they value the trust that the public demands of them. In a few weeks, council will be selecting a new mayor. Council will decide who amongst them best represents the values of this council. I urge council to replace you, but I do not demand the council replace you, because just as your deceitful actions have defined you, so will the council's decision define it. We will be watching closely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Anybody else wish to address the city on any matter? If not, I believe we have.
I think you'll be pleased to know we have a matter for closed session. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one property matter per sub-paragraph three, disposition of city-owned property of which discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
Mr. Pond. Aye. Mr. Foster. Aye. We'll take a five-minute recess and come back into closed session.